In accordance with the vision of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and exact known agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press, the new poster on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two via email. Copies of this notice has been placed at the administrative building, bulletin board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Our mission statement, Asbury Park District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse and evolving global society. Roll call please.
Ms. Halls.
Here.
Ms. Breach.
Mr. Griller.
Here.
Mr. Lattaroca.
Here.
Mr. Remy.
Here.
Ms. Ricks.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Ms. Zizinski.
Here.
Ms. Cope.
Here. Please rise and relax, please.
Good evening. We're going to start with our Staff Members of the Month presentation, starting with Mr. Perry Medina from MLK Opera Elementary.
Good evening. Good evening, once again. My staff member of the month is Ms. Jillian McManus, child psychologist. And with the round of applause, you can understand her popularity, but it goes beyond that. Jillian is a dedicated member of the Asbury Park School District. She is someone I rely on daily. Her insight, dedication, and determination is something that is not only inspiring to students, but to staff alike. I'm truly honored and blessed to have her on my team. Thank you, Jillian. Good evening. Thank you.
Again, my name is Thea M. Jackson-Byers, building principal of Bradley Elementary School. It is by no accident that during the month of April, we celebrate paraprofessionals. It is an honor and privilege to introduce our Bradley Elementary School Staff Member of the Month as Ms. Carmina Napoleon. She is an awesome and pleasure to work with, and like myself, I seem unlikable to her. So thank you so much, Ms. 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 Ann. I know we did trick you. We're sorry. Ms. W., thank you.
And this is for you, Ms. Napoleon. Ready, one, two, three.
And just to let you know, Ms. Donna, on just if you will, on Monday, you will be giving your parking space to Ms. Ann.
Dr. Jackson?
Good evening, everyone. It is with great pleasure and pleasure and privilege that I announce the Staff of the Month for Thurgood Marshall Elementary School as someone who is often behind the scenes, but so important to the makeup of our school. Her colleagues describe her as supportive, present, hands-on, and always willing to do the extra mile for staff and students alike. Our phenomenal, amazing, talented guidance counselor, Ms. Jory Artis, congratulations.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Howard Morris, the acting principal of Asbury Park High School, and it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you our Teacher of the Month is Jessica Daniels. I know Ms. Daniels does not like a lot of attention, and those people who are usually the hard workers are the ones who don't like the attention. I came here seven years ago, and when I was at several athletic functions, I used to see Ms. Daniels at soccer games in the rain, basketball games, two miles away at other places. She goes everywhere her students are, and she understands that the relationship with her students makes a big difference in the classroom. When I say there are no discipline issues coming out of her classroom, I mean zero. So again, thank you, Ms. Daniels, for the work that you do. Not only do we respect your teachers, your colleagues respect them as well. Thank you.
Board members, we have a presentation from our district auditor, Holman Freneier Allison. Mr. Chris Bodecker is a partner, or managing partner there at the firm. He was the lead on the team that visited the district this year to do the two thousand and twenty-one audit. The board is required to accept that audit in the minutes of its meeting, so Mr. Bodecker is here to give you the highlights of the audit and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jeff. Not quite a partner yet, but I will let Jerry know you said that. So my name is Chris Bodecker. As he said, I was the in charge of the audit. First thing I want to do is I want to thank Jeff and Ivy for all the time that they give us, because during an audit, we ask a lot of questions, we request a lot of items, and they are always there with an answer. They're always there for us, so it's, I mean, thank you. So usually, these audits are due on December fifth. This is the June thirty, twenty-one audit. Due to delays in reports from the state that has to do with pension and a bunch of other stuff that no one really cares about, those deadlines have been pushed back. This year, it ended up getting pushed back to March fifteenth, because the reports didn't come out until late January, early February, around that time. So this report was filed March tenth. Everything was filed timely, so we were in accordance with that. The next thing that everyone wants to know about is we had an unmodified opinion, which means that's the cleanest opinion that we can render. One thing I want to point out this year compared to prior years, in our opinion, if you look at it, is there's this thing called an emphasis of matter paragraph. What that is, is there was a new standard this year that just kind of moved how we presented certain numbers around. So this just kind of explains that that's why the report might look a little different if you compare them side to side with the prior year. There's no net difference, it's just an allocation thing. Right in the beginning of the audit, there's two documents I like bringing people's attention to. It's called the Letter of Transmittal and the Management's Discussion and Analysis. Really, these pages kind of summarize all the stuff behind it that makes it a little bit easier to digest. This report is put together by management and the auditors kind of in conjunction. There are two additional opinions in the back of the audit on internal control and on internal control of major programs. So every year, we're required to do what's called a single audit. It's based off of the expenditures on the grants that the district receives, and depending on how much is spent on those grants, we have to do a slightly deeper dive into certain ones depending than that would normally happen during a normal course of our life. Programs we looked at were the state aid, and then the federal programs was Title I, CARES, and the Coronavirus Relief Fund. We got a lot of practice looking at CARES and Coronavirus Relief Fund through all the districts last year, as we all know why. Unmodified opinion there, too. Everything was clean, so we were happy with that. Lastly, the only numbers I'm going to talk about, because it's boring, is our fund balance, which you can find on the C1. We had about twelve point five million at the end of last year. Now, these numbers are dibbied up in certain ways, so our excess surplus was about four point one, which was utilized in our twenty-one, twenty-two budget the current year. Excess surplus, oh, I'm sorry. Seven, oh, I'm sorry. The excess surplus for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget was about one point three, one point four. Capital reserve was about a million. Maintenance reserve was three hundred and sixty-five thousand. Emergency reserve, about five-ten. Reserve for unemployment claims, this is that new reserve that was created by that GASB standard I talked about earlier with the emphasis matter. That was about eighty, eighty thousand. Assigned, designated for subsequent years, that's also money that was used in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. That was about two point two. Incumbrances of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and then unassigned at two point five eight. That's really all I have. I also want to say there are no comments, no findings, so there's no corrective action plan necessary for the board to take. Jeff and Ivy and the entire finance office do a great job. They're incredibly helpful for us, so I want to thank them again. And now, if there's any questions, I really don't have anything else. All good?
We have one question.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
With regard to the reserves, do you comment on a state standard or accountability standard? We have to dip into those reserves somewhat for this upcoming budget due to the severity of our state aid cut. Do you comment on those to any degree?
By comment, do you mean like do we, like do we have a comment in the report about how the reserves are currently stated?
I didn't see that, but a value, any kind of standard you're following?
No, not necessarily. It's very dependent on the district and how they kind of operate from year to year. The capital reserve, I mean, normally, we do transfer money into the reserves. We didn't have the opportunity to do that last year, obviously, because we keep on getting cut, but it's not, I wouldn't say there's any alarm for the amounts. Yep. All right. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
So tonight, we have the presentation of the final budget for the two thousand and twenty-three school year. On April fourteenth, the board met and reviewed the tentative budget and approved that tentative budget. That tentative budget was then sent to the county for review. The county reviewed it, made comments back to us. We incorporated those comments into the budget and into the software and some of the narratives that exist within the software, and made those corrections, and worked with the county in a sort of back and forth with those comments, and they eventually approved our budget as suitable for the county, and that's what's being presented tonight to the board. There is a difference in what was presented on the fourteenth versus what is being presented tonight. Board members, you'll see you have a handout marked number five, adoption of two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year budget and tax levy dash revised. There is a change here where we are increasing our grant allocation, our special fund, special revenue fund expense, from nineteen million, three sixty-three, five eleven, which you'll see is blacklined, to nineteen million, eight forty-seven, four thirty-six. And that is to incorporate five additional positions, or not cut five positions, if you will, utilizing some of our SER funds to fund those positions going forward. So when we do vote on the budget, it will be on that revised amount with the inclusion of that additional grant money that's allocated towards those positions. Slide, please.
I'm sorry, what page was that on?
You have a handout, a single-page handout? When we get to the agenda in half an hour or so, whenever that is, I'll bring that up again and point that out for you. When we talk about the budget and how the budget is comprised, or what the components of the budget are, we usually talk about three buckets. We talk about state aid, and that is funds provided by the state to help the district, to assist the district in providing a thorough and efficient education. We talk about the local levy, or commonly property taxes, and that is actually an amount that's based on both property assessments, property values, and income of the district. And then we talk about district savings. And part of district savings is sort of what Mr. Lattaroca just mentioned to the auditor in terms of surplus funds that may not be spent in one year and can be carried to the next year to help supplement the coming budget. So those are the three components that go into the budget and that get us to the totals. When we talk about the budget, we talk about the state's funding formula, and you've heard a bit about S two and also how that S two bill impacts the SFRA, the School Funding Reform Act. When the School Funding Reform Act was put together back in two thousand and eight, that was a system that was based on a model K to five school. So the state looked at a model K to five and looked at how that building should be staffed, and the costs associated with that staffing, and came up with a base per pupil amount that would be needed on a sort of per-student basis. And that didn't include special needs students or any other special circumstances or accommodations for students. That was on a quote "base pupil." What they do is they then apply that number to the enrollments of the school district, and that's across the state. They look at additionally special ed needs, they look at other demographic needs, they look at ELL, transportation, those sorts of things, and then they do a weighted average for additional funding for those students. And then they also do sort of a breakdown with an additional weighting based on K to five at one rate, which is a one-to-one, then a middle school six to eight at a one point, which is weighted a little bit more, and then a high schooler, which again is that much more to educate a high school student. So they do the math on that and look at the enrollment of the district and how the enrollment breaks down based on those various weighted categories, and they come up with what's called an adequacy budget. So for Asbury Park, they run those numbers through the formula, and for the two thousand and twenty-three school year, they say we should be running the district on a budget of forty-three million, forty thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty-seven. They then take that number and then they look at the municipality, and they say, okay, what can the local municipality afford to pay towards that forty-three million dollars? And again, as we looked at that second budget on the previous slide, they look at property values, property assessments, and they look at the income of the district. They take those two different areas and again apply weightings to them and come up with what they believe the local municipality should be providing towards that forty-three million dollar budget. For two thousand and twenty-three, the calculation gives us twenty-four million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So that's what the state says, the city of Asbury Park, the residents of Asbury Park, should be contributing to the forty-three million dollar school budget. They then look at those two numbers, do the subtraction, and arrive at the eighteen million you see there, and that's how they determine what their state aid is going to be. So again, they look at the total cost, they look at what the city can provide, and the difference is what the state would provide in terms of aid. Again, the local taxes are based on property values and income, and there is this other thing floating out there that you've heard about, which is adjustment aid or hold harmless aid. That's something that's being addressed through the S two bill. And if you go to the next slide, please. The S two bill looks at sort of aid and whether or not a district is quote "overaided." So when they passed the School Funding Reform Act, there was a problem in that the numbers were going to change for districts, so the state said, we're going to hold harmless all districts, and we're going to make sure they get the same amount of aid in the current year that they got back in two thousand and eight. They were supposed to look at that over time and start reducing that. That did not happen until the S two bill came along, and when the S two bill came along back in two thousand and eighteen, it directly looked at that adjustment aid, of which we were receiving twenty-four million, and set forth a schedule based on percentages to take that back over time. So if you look at that chart, you can see the first column, in two thousand and eighteen, the district was receiving fifty-four million dollars in state aid. As we go through, you'll see the aid is decreasing, and the yellow or the orange, rather, bars represent what the state thinks the district should be giving, given in terms of state aid. So the number there, the twenty-seven million, oh fourteen, the twenty-six, the twenty, the fourteen, those are amounts that the state is saying that Asbury Park is overfunded by the state. So those are the amounts that the S two bill is beginning to claw back. And you see at the end of two thousand and twenty-five, what the state says they should be providing in state aid in the blue bar, and what they will then provide us with in the orange bar are the same. So that's the end of the S two, that's the end of the clawback of quote "overaided" dollars, and that puts us on par. You've heard, again, discussions about state aid and what the state aid losses have been for the district over the course of several years. Again, starting in two thousand and eighteen, the district lost just under a million dollars in state aid, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, and then over the course of six years to two thousand and twenty-three, you can see the state has been reducing our aid, and over the course of those six years, the district has lost twenty-six million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And it's estimated by the end of two thousand and twenty-five that that total will rise to about thirty-six million. So that's thirty-six million dollars in state aid through two thousand and twenty-five that the district has lost or will be losing during that period of time. So the question obviously is, how do we make up that difference? And again, graphically, you can see from two thousand and nineteen down to two thousand and twenty-five, the sharp drop-off. Here, we have our actual budget as of two thousand and twenty-three versus what the adequacy budget says. The blue bar represents our state aid, so our actual state aid on the left for two thousand and twenty-three is twenty-nine million, and the local tax contribution is fifteen point eight million, which is the orange bar. On the right, you can see what the state projects the numbers should be. So the state projects that in two thousand and twenty-three, the state aid portion should be eighteen point eight million, and the local contribution should be twenty-four point one million. So again, you can see the blue bars, the state aid is currently twenty-nine, they say it should be eighteen, and they're saying the local tax levy, which is currently fifteen point eight, should be twenty-four million. Again, just to put that graphically, you can see the top orange line represents what the state says the local tax levy should be, and the blue line beneath is what the tax levy actually is. So those are funds that are being reduced in state aid, and they're expecting us to make that up in local taxes, and you can see those lines still have quite a bit of separation between the two. If you want to talk about municipalities and just taxes in general, in general, if you look at the left bar, which is the county average, of a municipality's general tax rate, in Asbury Parks, it's about one point five two, I believe, per hundred dollars of assessed value, but if you look at the county average, fifty-five percent of the town's taxes are allocated to schools. Thirty-one percent is allocated to the municipality itself, and fifteen percent of what's collected goes to the county. In the center, you can see Asbury Park. In Asbury Park, as of two thousand and twenty-one, which was the latest figures when we put this together, thirty-five percent of the local taxes were going to the school, forty-nine percent were going to the municipality, and sixteen percent was going to the county. If we look at some of our neighbors, in Neptune, forty-nine percent of their taxes were going towards education, in Long Branch, forty-six, were going towards education. So you can see there's a bit of a discrepancy there in terms of how that tax revenue was allocated between the schools, the municipality, and the county. We have some other abbots listed there in Newark, Trenton, Keansford, Camden, and you can see that those districts as well, being former abbots, have a similar issue that we have here in Asbury Park in terms of the allocations and what goes to schools and what goes to the municipality. When we talk about the two thousand and twenty-three budget, as I said, we submitted the budget, it was reviewed by the county, there was some back and forth with the county, we discussed the budget with the finance committee, we discussed the budget with the full board, and we went back and looked at our budget for two thousand and twenty-three. It made some adjustments to try and offset some of the losses that we've been seeing over the past several years. Some of that was to increase our revenue side by looking at the historical trend of our extraordinary aid. Extraordinary aid is money that comes to us sort of to supplement special ed costs, so we increased our revenues based on the historical trend there. We looked at our maintenance reserve, which was mentioned earlier, at around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe, three hundred and sixty-five thousand. We're taking a hundred and fifty thousand out of that to help supplement our budget. We're looking at emergency reserves to help supplement cameras in the district, security cameras, and then we're repurposing grant funding. Again, we're looking at our SER funds, we're assessing how those SER funds are being spent, and what the district's priorities are, and what the projects are, and we're allocating some of those SER funds towards maintaining staff and maintaining positions within the So when we talk about the actual budget for two thousand and twenty-three, we're looking at an operating budget, or the budget that's sort of used for the day-to-day expenses of forty-nine million. We're looking at grants and entitlements of nineteen million, and we have no debt, so our total budget is sixty-eight million dollars. When we talk about that nineteen million in terms of grants and entitlements, you're talking about money that's allocated for very specific purposes. So we've heard some of the audience members talk about Title I and Title II and the various titles through ESEA, through that act, which replaced the No Child Left Behind, and those funds are dedicated to very specific purposes based on the various titles that they come from. So we can't just use that money in sort of a way that just fills a hole that we think needs to be filled. Those have to go towards improvement of instruction, or towards professional development, towards English language learners, those sorts of things, so we can't just use that money, you know, any particular way we'd like. When you look at the allocation of our operating budget and where that money goes, and I think that was sort of mentioned, as is typical with most school districts, about sixty to sixty-five percent of the operating budget goes towards salaries and benefits. So you can see about forty-four percent of our forty-nine million is going towards salaries, and another eighteen percent is going to benefits. Asbury Park is a bit unique in that we have three charter schools, so charter school tuition is another area that the operating budget has to pay for, and that's another twenty-one percent of that forty-nine million dollars. And that's between eleven and twelve million dollars that's going out the door right to the charters. Another thing we don't have much control over is our out-of-district costs, our out-of-district placements for our special needs students. So again, we have six percent of the budget going out of that forty-nine million to help service our special needs students. Utilities was often mentioned, but utilities, as you can see, is a rather small portion of our overall budget, but what this says is that you're looking at things But what this says is that you're looking at things that we don't have a lot of flexibility with in terms of salary and benefits, charter school tuition, out-of-district tuition and utilities that uses about ninety-one percent of that forty-nine million dollars. The other eight percent is is what's left out of the forty-nine million. That's about four point one, four point two million dollars. And that's what's left to go to supplies, to books, trips for the students, facilities, transportation costs, those sorts of things. So you can see there's after the sort of mandatory out-the-door costs, you're looking at about eight percent of that forty-nine million that's left available for other things. So that becomes very difficult when you talk about cost cutting and recognizing efficiencies in terms of where we have to go to to make those cuts and how much is actually in that pot to be cut. When we talk about the tax impact and what the tax impact is going to be for the two thousand twenty-three budget, here we have our twenty-one, twenty-two tax rate and our twenty-two, twenty-three tax rate. The twenty-two, twenty-three is based on raising fifteen million eight ninety-nine, four forty-seven. That's a three million dollar increase in taxes over the prior year. And if you look at those assessed home values, you can see that the average assessment in Asbury Park is four hundred and fifty-three thousand sixty dollars. The taxes, the educational portion of the taxes in in twenty-two was about twenty-six hundred dollars. That would increase to three thousand dollars or an annual increase of about four hundred and forty-eight dollars or thirty-seven dollars a month. So that would be the tax impact of the proposed increase that we have going forward for the two thousand twenty-three school year. With that, I turn it over to any questions the board may have or any other comments from from members of administration.
I've got one question. I was just curious about, and by the way, I know this is really, this is really tough to sharpen the pencils and and to try to make this budget work. It's like putting a square peg in a round hole sometimes. I had a question about what happens after two thousand twenty-five. Does it just stay at that that same aid level or what?
So the thinking behind the S two bill, which expires in two thousand twenty-five, is that through the course of those six or so years, the districts that were over aided would be pulled back into that level that the adequacy budget says the state should be providing in terms of aid. And that that money that was clawed back from Asbury Park, for example, could then be repurposed to districts that may be underfunded based on how the monies are allocated right now. So if we go west into West Monmouth County, there's some districts there that have seen enrollment increases but may not necessarily have seen similar increases in their state aid. So the S two bill was put forward to sort of balance out those perceived inequities in terms of how aid was allocated throughout the state and throughout our county. And they're projecting that that two thousand twenty-five that Asbury Park would have enough time to raise our taxes to the point where that mix of state aid and taxes from the local community would balance to equal what they project is the adequate amount to educate kids in Asbury. So that's a long way around to say at the end of two thousand twenty-five, they're saying we should be sitting pat with the correct amount of aid and the correct amount of local taxes to spend to educate our students.
And what cost to our students? That's my question to them.
It's a political question, I guess. Any additional comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Before we open up the public comment, we'll have a comment from our board lawyer, Adam.
Okay, we're going to be having public comment. If anyone would like to comment on any matter, including the budget presentation, now would be your time to do that. In accordance with Board Policy zero one six seven, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer session and all public comments shall be directed to the board president. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the board president and provide his or her name, municipality of residence and group affiliation, if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the board president and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up public comment.
Good evening. I'm Mrs. Anderson Bray. I mean, I reside in Asbury.
Excuse me, Ms. Anderson Bray, just so that we can all hear you. Thank you. If you could just pull that closer. Thank you.
I know because the last time Ms. Cook was like, okay. Anyway, I'm Mrs. Anderson Bray. I'm the parent and advocate of John Asia Bray. I was looking at your slide. I'm really confused. You say you have a budget for trips, transportation, books and all this. Last time my daughter went on a trip, I think she was in third grade. Transportation, I'm not really sure what you mean about transportation because if you ask me, I think every child in Asbury, being that it's not that big, should get transportation, being that when the time goes back, it's dark and sometimes the children have to go get their younger siblings who they're like passing home just to go get their sibling to go home and it's dark. Books, I'm not really sure about the books if you mean the grant that you got for the laptops. I'm really confused about where this money is going to and what you have written down and what you say that the money is going to because I see that the children are just getting less and less and every time I see you guys are smiling and then pictures like you accomplished something. And the bigger picture is the children are failing. You're failing them. What if their parents aren't educated? So they're being failed both ways, but you're getting this money. Like, where are you coming from? What what difference are you making? You keep on talking about change and success. We need differences. We're always seeing change. We see change all the time. This change right now is not good because these dollars and cents are not adding up for your title, your accolades, the things you don't know, what money is going to. I don't see a difference. I need to see what what trips, what trips? Where are they going? Where are they going? A trip to the hospital for a gunshot wound or something or a fight that happens in school? I mean, what are you guys really giving our kids? Honestly? You sit here in your fancy suits and you, I don't have a clue on your face and stuff. You celebrate this. You're talking about this. What's going on for these kids, though? You're not succeeding or helping these kids. You're not. And I'm tired of getting on this mic saying the same thing to a whole bunch of adults that have degrees. It's not making sense.
Good evening. My name is Sanja Mack. I'm a resident. I got grandkids. I got everybody in the school system. I'm just trying to figure out. I'm not. I'm just coming to ask questions, okay? I'm just trying. My name is Sanja Mack. I live in Asbury. I'm a resident. And I got grandkids that go here. I'm just a person that's been advocate in the community, especially in the school system. And I just, I'm trying to grasp the concept. That's why I'm here. But like, we don't have nobody working in the school systems already with these kids. There's nobody here. These people are understaffed, underworked. They in here early in the morning killing themselves. Then I try to come in, disable, you know, like Ms. Bray and a couple of us who live for these kids. We come in, we go over to the board office. We go over to the board office. We can't get in. I haven't had applications in here for over thirty years. And now everybody on the chopping block. We need more people in here for these babies. These babies are not learning anything. They're not getting educated. And I really feel like the rest of these people, these people should get applause for all the stuff they come and tolerate in the school system. And for them to be on the chopping block, I think is really scandalous. But everybody in big executive levels, they're not on the chopping block, just the ones that got hands on with our kids. That's not fair. Understand the budget, but understand these kids need education. It's not just about no money. When are they going to get properly educated in Asbury? These kids is no leper. Half of them can't barely read. They get pushed through this whole system at kindergarten, preschool levels. Because why? The staff is overworked. They got ninety-nine kids in the classroom. And these teachers can't do it by themselves and now they're getting cut. I'm just trying to come understand why I put my application in a thousand times over here. And then I go for Kelly. Then y'all got Kelly Education in here. Oh, let's talk about Kelly Education. I go to them to get in because I can't get in no other way because it's a favoritism thing. If you're mad at somebody, you ain't getting in. If you don't know somebody, you ain't getting in. This been going on in Asbury and fifty-three all my life. So I go in Kelly Education just to try to help raise our babies. And guess what? I finished the test and one day I called the lady back. Oh, you finished? Yeah, I'm finished. But at the end of the day, they only give me twelve dollars and sixty-three cents. I got degrees. I got got twelve dollars to come in here and deal with all the, not even the kids, all the grownups sometimes. Ain't about the kids. That's all I'm saying. I understand nothing about the board. That's what I'm trying to say. Have a nice night, John.
Sheila Brazil. I don't need it anyway. Twelve hundred, that's right, thanks. Twelve hundred Jeffrey Street. On the permanent environment policy I was talking about, I quoted the wrong thing, so I looked it up. And it's from the one in the district. It's twenty-four fifteen point oh four. And it was created April twenty-eleven and it was last edited April twenty-eleven. So that's the policy, the permanent environment piece that tells you everything's supposed to be in there. And I want to like piggyback, but not really piggyback because I might might be a little bit too heavy on somebody's back. But as far as like the education and the teachers, this person getting ripped and that person getting ripped. Well, I've been, my son Anthony's thirty-one. I've been doing this for over twenty years. And my kids always went here, middle school, high school. So but everybody, we're talking about the teachers and I know it's hard, sometime a hard job. And the kids, sometimes kids, you have some hard-handed kids. So but anyway. But you got some good teachers in this district and you got some bad teachers in this district. We're just going to put it out there like it is. And it's sometimes my kids, you might get a good preschool teacher or a first grade teacher. So wait, when that child move up, if this this next teacher they go to is not a teacher that's going to elevate them to go to the next level, they're not going to be elevated. So you can't blame all the teachers, but you can blame some of the teachers. And then even it's it's a circle. Community, administration, parents and teachers. It's a circle. It's everybody. So it takes everybody. It takes a village to raise a child. So it's like blames should go around to everybody, not just the teachers, not just administration. So I'm saying that. Well, I say years ago, just rename the district and then rehire people. Then you read out the ones that's not educating our kids. But I know we talked about the budget. I know the budget hasn't been hasn't been cut, but at the same time, like I say, you have good teachers and bad teachers, been there, done that. But you could complain. And coming into this district, step one, it's not a whole bunch of money, but it's a lot more money than what you get. But at the same time, people need to realize that it's just not the teachers, it's everybody. So you shouldn't just be blaming everybody. Yes, they say, I I'll be the first one to say you cut the little people, the peons, but sometimes the administration need to be cut a little bit. Even just take, if you take a pay cut, maybe if you cut like three or four people, like try to administration, you might say like two or three hundred thousand dollars. But I'm not here to, you know, bash anybody. I'm just here just like, just to put everybody on blast. You know what I'm saying? So to speak. So it's just not the teachers. It's just not the administration. It's everybody. It's a community also and the parents. So y'all have a good night.
Hello. Thank you for that great presentation on the budget. And the way that was laid out, it was easy to understand. So you have forty-four point three percent that's going to salaries. However, we don't know how that salary is being allocated or who it is being split amongst to make it a forty-four point three percent on the salaries. So that goes back to my question or comment that I posed before about the cuts that you are proposing to make when regards to reduction of the force and which position should be eliminated and which position should be kept on. The other concerning matter here is charter tuition. Yes, Asbury Park has three charter schools. You have Hope Academy, Academy Charter and College Achieve, in which you're putting out twenty-one point three percent of the budget to those charter schools. But you guys are saying bring back your children and we won't have to put out that much. But what are you doing to rectify the reason why we took them out of this district in the first place? Have you guys ever considered doing exit interviews? Even my school does exit interviews when our students leave, asking what is it that we can improve? How can we make your education here better? We ask them that midway through their education of what it is that they like about the school, what they don't like about the school, what is it that they could prove on? How can we help meet their needs? A simple interest in the parent's concerns, a simple interest in the children's educational concerns can actually eliminate some of your students being removed from the district if we felt as though that our needs are being heard and our children's needs are being met. But that's not done because I took both my children out of district and not a word was mummer except a transfer card. Utilities, two percent. It's not really that much, but have you guys considered sustainable energy? The other percentage is the eight point four that you laid out for trips, books, facilities, supplies and things of that nature. Now, I know when my children were going here, books wasn't really a thing. They had the Chromebooks and of course during the pandemic, you know, we had the online learning. So there wasn't a need for book. But even before the pandemic, there was really no books being handed out. The supplies that this that the school has are given mainly by the parents. We get this entire supply list at the beginning of the school year that we need to bring for the children. And then not only that, as an educator myself, I know that the teachers are supplying most of the supplies for the school. Facilities, trips, to piggyback off of what one of the other parents said, trips are far in between here. So I just feel as though that without having specifics on some of these things, the budget, the reduction of force just still isn't making sense. And I still don't see a reason to bring my child back into this district. I just don't. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Madam President and everyone else. My name is Maureen Casey and I reside at sixteen seventy West Princeton Avenue in Brick. I'm a retired Asbury Park Public School District employee and I'm here to express my concerns in regards to tonight's board agenda that lists the reduction in force of approximately twenty-five, twenty-eight certified and non-certified staff members. After hearing Mr. Hastings' wonderful presentation of the about the budget, I understand a lot of things about the budget. I understand a lot of things about the money. I had a whole thing written up, but after hearing- I had a whole thing written up, but after hearing all that, we had such amazing special education programs in place, we trained so many people. We had things moving and grooving, we could have been carrying them on, there shouldn't be that many out-of-district placements. Okay, that being said, I have to get back on track or I'll run out of time. There have been many agendas over the years that have raised my blood pressure, and this is one of them. I'm still disheartened by the elimination of art teachers from the elementary schools. I was hoping to see them reinstated, but after seeing this insane list, I will continue to wish. I know I won't get any answers tonight, and that's fine, it's been made clear, this is not a place for that, but I pray that you listen. I want to believe that you realize that post-pandemic events are on everyone's minds. With the population you are responsible for, that were struggling pre-COVID are now even further behind. I know you are all in the business of money and budgeting, but the people on this list are in the business of educating and building social and emotional skills during this new normal. You just honored three, a paraprofessional, a guidance counselor, and a school psychologist as staff members of the month. The first one on the list really threw me for a loop, a technology coach? When so many students, staff, parents still need assistance after the world went virtual. I know we are back in person, but the need is still there and will continue to be. The second one hit me home the hardest, since this professional took a portion of my job over. And the caseloads for speech and language specialists keep growing, with all the three-year-olds entering our district that had to wear masks and missed out on verbal interactions during the pandemic. Not to mention every other student you service. I will group the next three, since I am dumbfounded that during a time when our students need extra services to express their anxiety, depression, et cetera, you are going to eliminate a school psychologist, a social worker, and a guidance counselor. Seven elementary school teachers, seriously? So you can increase class size? So your students can fall farther behind as they struggle to focus with more students in a class? As far as the non-certified staff, I'm sorry, did we change the physical makeup of the district since I retired in June? You repaired and cleaned everything that needs to be fixed and prevented, all cleaning issues, everything. Four security officers, I read about intruders and violence, please, cutting back on that, are we fixing it with the, with the cameras? I have always offered solutions when I was made aware of issues that concern me, well, I'm concerned, the district has approximately the three-hundred-and-ninety employees, do we really need someone to supervise the three amazing women who are handling HR on their own? A very highly paid person, I might add. I know without a budget, you can't run a school.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Please consider.
Hello, my name is Dominique Wilson, ten twenty-six Monroe Avenue, where'd you leave off, ma'am? I'll finish it. Where is it? I know without a budget, you can't run a school district, but please consider looking at the employees that never made contact or impact the student's education on a daily basis. With Twitter and so many other social media outlets, why do we need a highly paid employee? So many employees are doing great jobs of informing us all of the amazing things going on in the district. Listen, I would love everyone to keep their job, but as you say, that can't be done with all the monetary cuts. But please look more closely at where the cuts happened. Please walk around central office and think how parents in the shop, how, think how the person did, how the person changed a person's life. Also, if you would raise the rate of pay for substitutes, like we discussed for years, I will gladly enroll with Kelly Services. But I can't afford the gas and tools, you are losing on, out on highly qualified and experienced professionals.
That was me, you're losing out on me.
And for my own, this is my own personal comment, sitting here in the audience, watching you guys, these faces just goes to show how much you do not care. The four of you have nonchalant faces, and it's like you don't care about our kids, and nothing that anybody is saying, and it's sad to look at. And I personally, I have a child, and I've never put my kid in this district, cause when I was growing up, my mom said, don't ever come to Asbury. And now, I would never bring my kid here, and you're gonna never get more kids here, why? Cause look at you, you do not care. Your face doesn't care, Mr. Adams, you, Ms. President, do not care, Miss, none of you guys care. Ms. Carol, I heard from a bunch of people that you're from the state, and you get a lot of money, and all you was complaining about the money our kids get, and you do nothing. Look at you guys' faces, and I'm so sad to be here, it's my first time coming here, and I'm disgusted with you guys. And you're asking, the, the budget was not, it wasn't sub- it wasn't like pleasing, it wasn't, like you said, it was very broad. Um, my mom provides a bunch of money out of pocket for her kids, she's a special education teacher. She also has never been on a trip with her kids, so what's up with that, where's the trips at? Where's the books, they got a bunch of papers, they're getting copies of papers, they don't have physical books, and then you guys got money for their Chromebooks. And yet, y'all wanna charge parents for Chromebooks. Like, what are y'all really doing? Y'all should be sad, and y'all would never send your kids here, I promise you, you wouldn't, but you want us to bring our kids back here. My kid goes to College Achieve, and they're amazing, but they're also, they're beyond amazing. Their teachers are amazing, their highops are amazing, even the Board of Education in Neptune is amazing. And they don't give us the energy that you guys are giving right now, and disgusted.
Tracy Rogers, St. Avenue. I'm sorry I'm late, I didn't get a chance to, uh, see this amazing budget. But, I was at the council meeting, talking about people being pushed out of Asbury Park. Uh, if you've read the paper for the last couple of days, you see what I'm talking about. I get up here every day that I can and talk to this, this board. And I've asked for a couple of things, an assessment, a true assessment. And I've talked to the, to the parents, I've talked to the teachers, I've talked to the children. I've asked for, is every person being evaluated? If you go to any corporation, people are evaluated. Could anybody here tell me we have one-hundred percent evaluation on everybody? Where's the assessment that I asked for? We have to change this budget because of mishaps that have gone on in Asbury Park for years. But we've had the money. But now, we're reducing it, and these kids are gonna suffer. Right now, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a fair person, I really am. The story that came out of Asbury Park press, it got there, ninety percent of the information came from me. And I've taken my time, I got not one dime for standing up here or doing anything. But I've asked for an assessment, one person to pull me aside, take an hour, and explain questions I had. We're getting rid of twenty-eight people. Do we evaluate what our needs and necessity is in this district? I'm at a point that more things are gonna happen in this city because investigation's gonna happen. Things are gonna be researched. But the worst of all, our kids are not gonna get the education they deserve. A packed article that says we're three-hundred and th- uh, uh, three-hundred and four out of three-hundred and four districts for SATs, where we can't even beat that standard, where we talked about we improved. We're the lowest. I would never have my kids do that. So I've asked for simple things. When would people grow up and stop pointing blame, and let's get something done? I just wanted an assessment. I got questions, I've researched, I'm educated. You can't believe it, look at the story in Asbury Park, ninety percent of the information was mine. I'm not letting anybody off the hook. Things are gonna be different, and I said I'm not going anywhere. So let's decide.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Sean Hamilton, I live at eighty-four Creek Road in Keansburg, New Jersey. Um, I'm a twenty-two-year classroom veteran in Asbury Park, and, uh, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Teacher of the Year. I'm sorry I'm late, um, someone made the bright decision to have parent-teacher conferences, um, on not just a regular Board of Education night, but upon, on a night where we are cutting staff. I find that incredibly insulting. And the fact that our administrators from our schools were called here, and great that we gave out a presentation, but there was no administrator in my school during conferences. I find that insulting, and many parents at our conferences tonight were outraged that there was not one person in the building to help them along. And they didn't even know that there was a Board of Education meeting, because it was not forty-eight hours, they didn't know that so many staff are being ripped. We should be ashamed, all of us should be ashamed of ourselves for that little misstep, which I don't think was a misstep, I think that was purposely planned. I find weird that, yes, three active, uh, union members from my school, Martin Luther King, we were at our conferences, so we couldn't be here. Not just coincidence. I beg this board to reconsider and ask more questions about, not just the budget, but why these cuts are happening. We just hired two new administrators, at what, a buck fifty apiece, plus benefits? That's four hundred thousand dollars that could be saved. Most districts with more student population have one director or supervisor of curriculum instruction that handles everything. We have five, six, seven. We need to reevaluate our central office staff. You can't keep cutting special education teachers, you can't deny that we don't have issues with children needing extra services. You can't pretend the problem's not there and make it go away. That's not reality. You can't lay off psychologists. We barely have enough security to handle the nonsense that's going on in all of our schools. And if you think everything's hunky-dory in the schools, then please, get into the schools and walk around. Talk to some parents, talk to students that are taking their kids again this year, just like last year, and moving their kids to charter school, because they don't feel safe in our schools. We can't keep doing this smoke and mirrors game, where we're talking about budgets, we got nearly twenty-four million dollars in ESSER funds, and nobody knows where that money is. There's not one accounting, not from State Monitor, not from anybody, about where a penny of that went. And I find it hard to believe we spent twenty-something million dollars on solar panels, when we still have an elevator that doesn't work in Martin Luther King School. I spoke about that back in October, and I would force the teacher out because she had mobility problems. And guess what? It's still broken, still broken. You need to reconsider this about cutting staff, you can't keep cutting the soldiers that do the work every day. Cut some of the people that walk around through the classrooms and just like to critique people. And would refuse to teach a lesson, refuse to show me the right way to do things. I feel like, you know, you go to karate school, and the instructor tells you to make him, do this particular move, but the instructor will not show you how that move should be done. That's what's going on in this district right now. Let's stop pretending that everything's hunky-dory, and let's stop worrying about little picture opportunities and get down to business. Please reconsider these cuts. It's not doing anything for anyone. And you wanna cut, look at that bloated central office. Look at that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year rent you're paying there. And I hear talk about, you know, Barack Obama might be opening up again next year. It wasn't good enough for central office, I don't know how it's gonna be good enough for students again. So think about that also, when we find out in October, or we find out in August, that our kids are gonna be going back over there. I beg you to reconsider this, this is a terrible, terrible decision. And the people who made this decision should be held accountable for it, shame on them, thank you.
Anyone else? At this time, I'll close public climate.
Madam President, um, I would like a consent agenda, but I'll call to your attention on, uh, one, on B one, letter B, number two, should be two. I'd like to call it into the, uh, call it to the minutes. Item on B one, letter B, number two, should be two numerically, not one. I'd like to call it into the minute. And then I would act, to ask for consent agenda on all items from B one through B seven.
I'll move it.
I'd like to have some discussion.
You have to second it first.
Second. Yeah, no, I, I'd like to have some, uh, discussion, is it okay if I go? Okay. Um, regarding the, the reduction in, in force. Um, I wanna just, it may take a little bit of time, I just wanna go over and see how many of these positions are left, once, um, we reduce the ones that are there? Cause I just wanna get, wrap my head around it a little bit. And so, with that, so we have the reduction in force of the certificated staff. Um, we remove one technology coach, how many are left? And I don't know who to direct that to, so.
We would have three remaining.
Three remaining, okay. And if we remove one speech-language spe- specialist, how many speech-language which specialists will we have left?
I can get you the roster control for all of those positions, I do not have them right in front of me.
Okay.
As the
Yeah, I, I just wanna, my, my main concern is that we're not left where, um, we have one of each of these specialized folks kinda running from one school to another. Um, I realize and appreciate the fact that these cuts, some of them are really necessary. Um, but I just wanted to, to just go through it, so I, I, I have a clearer picture.
Mr. Gorilla, with all due respect, you do understand that we are underfunded by twenty-four million dollars from the local municipality. As our first initial budget, we put six million dollars towards, going towards our first budget, which we had been informed that we had to go back and reallocate additional, um, ESSER funds to close that gap. Of those three million, of those funds, we've saved thirty-five positions. Those decisions in terms of the additional cuts did not come from, um, without some painstaking conversations, as well as meetings that, um, were addressed with the municipality. And if you look at the budget presentation that was presented today, this district has been underfunded by the local municipality for a number of years. And so, I think it should be very clear that we have done above and beyond looking at saving as many jobs, given the dynamic of the underfunding that we have gotten from a tax base that is sitting on equity of at least two-hundred to three-hundred thousand dollars per home. And when we look at a cost of thirty-seven dollars, uh, increase, that is far and under away what we should be getting in terms of twenty-four million dollars. So we're still being shorted nine million dollars from the local municipality to close that twenty-four million dollar gap. So if the local municipality was funding us at the twenty-four required million dollars, these cuts would not even be a consideration. So to sit here and ask to go over a budget roster of how many positions we have, how many positions we're cutting, I don't wanna cut a soul.
I didn't say you, I didn't say you wanted to, I don't think anyone here wants to.
The question, the question needs to be, the question is being asked, and it needs to be answered, okay? None of these positions are one-off positions, but none of these positions are positions that I said last month, that I wanted to balance the budget on the backs of staff, and I was very clear on that. And so these three additional meetings that we've had in order to right-size this budget, looking at these numbers, looking at the amount that we're getting, and the fact that next year, the budget is gonna be far more severe, to ask me to give you a number of staff of how many we have social workers in our district right now, without having a roster control, is like asking me how many students are in Miss Tobino's third, I mean, sixth grade math class in third period.
So
So, again, sitting here not having that information does not help to resolve the issue in terms of the budget cuts, which are far and out of our, our control.
So, again, I, I, I'll say it again, I appreciate everything that's been going on, because I've been at all the different meetings. My question wasn't about anyone's dedication or, or, or commitment to the children. I think everyone here, including the parents, including everyone on the board, is committed to our teachers, uh, and to our, to our students, and to our staff, and to our school district. Whether or not we have kids in the school district, district, um, so I want to get off of that because I'm appreciative of the fact that this is going on. I'm just asking because I'd like to get a clearer picture as a school board member, okay, who's missing his daughter's birthday dinner right now. I'd like to know, I'm going to use this time as best, as best as I can, with all due respect to everyone here, I'd like to just know what is, what is, who remains if one psychologist is, is cut? Who remains if one social worker is cut? Uh, is, is cut? Who remains if one ISS teacher is, is cut? I'm just asking to get a better and clearer understanding so that way my vote is an informed vote. And I'm saying this with, like, all the respect possible to everybody here because we all work really damn hard to make sure our kids get educated in the face of S2, in the face of, of, of the tax increases and the cuts. And by the way, the solar panels were free. And whoever said that, just, you know, we're not, we're not spending anything on solar panels. But here's the thing. Nobody knows this, that Solar Landscape won an RFP for the district and is providing free electricity for at least 15 years. Combined 1.37 megawatts of solar. We're saving 1,000 metric tons of carbon emissions and over $100,000 a year by offsetting over half of our electrical use. I know that. But there's a department in the school district that should put that information out. I went to an unveiling yesterday, and there was no press there. So, yeah, I've got issues with some of the, some of the, the stuff on here. And that's why I just want to know, with all due respect, the idea behind cutting these, these people, not that we shouldn't, okay, but I just want to make sure what's left once that one position is cut. Because then I could justify it to people, saying, well, we cut one psychologist, but we have three remaining. We cut one ISS person, but we have one remaining or two remaining. That's the only reason I'm asking. So if, if it's okay, I'd like to at least get an idea. Even if it's ballpark, I don't need to know an exact number. I'd like to know, you know, how many is left when we cut one guidance counselor?
Dr. Gibbs, would you provide him with that information, please?
Yeah. Madam President, may I, uh, Mr. Grillo, I know that you're trying to get a, get a greater picture, but when you get the agenda a couple days before the meeting and you have concerns about what the bigger picture is and who's left to get you a better understanding so you can be informed when you vote, the thing would be to reach out to the superintendent and get those answers. So when you come to this board meeting and at that one agenda item, you already have the answers that you can comfortably vote your conscience of whether it's going to be yes or no. But I agree with Dr. Adams is that he doesn't have the roster here. He's not here to have a back and forth about who's left, who's not left. That should have been taken care of before we come to the meetings as all board members should be informed when they get here.
Ms. Lozinski, I understand. And normally, normally I would, you know, again...
But this is not, this is not the time to go back and forth about the entire roster of who's left.
Why not?
Because nobody's prepared. If you wanted that, and those answers, you should have asked before you came.
It could even be a ballpark. Like, it does, like, that's...
That's not fair. You can't give, because somebody's going to quote somebody on this dais, and they're going to hold them to that quote. And if they're wrong, it's going to be all over whatever.
My other question is, why am I the only one that's asking this? Am I just being offended? No, no, please, no, no. I'm serious. This is not about... Maybe I don't know, and I, please do not clap. This is serious stuff. I'm not asking for applause.
Because maybe I've already asked those questions. Maybe I've had the discussion already.
Okay, so can you tell me?
I'm not going to go through it right now.
I'd like to know, if, if, if it's possible to be...
Then you should get it from the HR director.
Can I get it emailed to me at least?
Dr. Adams did tell you that they're going to provide you that information. Madam, Madam President?
Okay.
I would, I would also like to point out another reason why Dr. Adams and the, I'm going to say administration, is reluctant, every one of these joke, every one of these positions, the people in them right now have bumping rights. So to give you a position of who's left and how many, who it's going to be and all of this is just not fair, I don't think, to the teachers. If, if I were head of the union, I would be concerned right now that the, that the district, it seems, has been flooded with misinformation to begin with. Um, you know, somebody standing up and saying, we don't know where $24 million went to a few minutes ago. Yes, we do. We just had an accountant who, who, who audited the district, and we had to account for every single penny to him that the district spent. So for somebody to make the statement that nobody knows what's going on and where the money is, is just absolutely wrong. And, and, you know, you sit and you, you, you try to give people the opportunity to express themselves, but misinformation i- is as dangerous as, as having no information. And right now, I would say because of the number of times that this budget has had to be changed, because of the number of times we have negotiated this budget with the county, and we haven't mentioned them tonight, but Dr. Richens and the county business administrator have been aware of what is happening with the Asbury budget every step of the way. We have met and talked with them two and three times a week, sometimes two and three times a day. So it hasn't been done in isolation. And if there were any way possible, I, I can say this, and I don't know everybody here, but I know there's not one person at this table that enjoys cutting anybody's job. We as a nation have gone through hell in the last couple of years. Everybody knows that. And I don't think there's anybody hasn't been affected by it. So everybody has had somebody lose a job or be tremendously disappointed, devastated o- over their plight right now of what's happened in, in this country and to everybody. And most important, our children. We don't even know, and, and Maureen made good reference to it with the emotional and social learning issues. We don't even know the impact on our children that COVID and the loss of education in this country is going to eventually result in. We don't even know a kid losing two years because it's never happened in the history of this country. So some of the answers, they're good questions. I, I won't argue that one. But please don't make the assumption that someone said, "We don't care because we're expressionless." We don't, that's totally wrong, first of all. And secondly, well, you can have your opinion and I can have mine.
We're supposed to be expressionless.
And, and don't, for, please, can think for one minute, nobody cares. Because these people aren't paid. They get absolutely not one penny for representing your children and you. And they sit here and take many times a lot of abuse. Now granted, they don't have to, but they're doing that because they care about children, and they care about the schools, and they care about this city. I've seen that. That's the one thing I can convey to Trenton when I go to meetings. People here care. And they care. That, you know, that's not the problem, not caring. So I just want to remind everybody, this is not quite as simple as it might seem to be able to rattle off who's going or who would be affected by this. Our HR director is working with a company to double-check, to make certain that all of the records that she has inherited in that department are accurate before anybody is notified that they will not have a job. And that's some of the hesitation in it. And I, but it's kind of tough just sitting here quiet every week, particularly because I've never been quiet in my life. But, thank you.
I, I appreciate what Carol said because there's way too much rumor and falsehoods that get brought up, and we're supposed to, as a board, remain expressionless and take in the information. And that's part of the reason why I always complain about communication and to make sure that we're, we can counter these lies and these rumors. They are lies, a lot of them. So forgive me if I have, I'm a little enthusiastic about this, and I want to get as much information out there and record it so we've, you know, so folks understand where this is coming from and how it's coming from. I do have one technical thing that I wanted to ask. I have to abstain from, from a particular item. And Adam, do you know which item that is? Because I, I can't find the number.
Mr. Grillo, I believe you're referring to item C4, number 11 on the business agenda? C4, number 11.
Okay, thank you. And the only other thing I'm going to say is, I, I get a little concerned because of what Carol also said in terms of, Ms. Morris said about, about the mental health of our kids. And one of the reasons why I want to ask is, because when I see a speech language specialist and a psychologist and a social worker getting cut, it brings me concern because of everything that's gone on in terms of the mental health of our kids. I deal with it on a daily basis with my child. And so that's what, that's the intent of wanting to know this thing. And if it comes in an email form, that's fine, too. But I, I, the reason why I ask these is because of what's been going on and the mental health crisis that we're experiencing right now with our kids. So with that, thank you.
Motion is all items B1 through B7. Ms. Lozinski? Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Microphone, please. Thank you.
Yes on everything except for with B1, number two. Ms. Jackson, that's a no. And I'm also going to abstain on B1, 1A, since I don't have the information.
Thank you. Ms. Halls?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
No.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes on everything except...
Microphone, please.
Yes on everything. I'm abstaining on anything that have to do with awards.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
Yes on everything except for B1, number one. No.
Ms. Cook? Motion's carry. Could I have a motion for page A2, number 10 and 11? That's the minutes in the calendar.
Move it.
Moved by Ms. Cook, second, Mr. Grillo. Any questions or comments? Ms. Cook? Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Halls?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks? Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski? Motion's carry. Board members, we're going to vote on the C section. I just want to note the adjustment that was mentioned earlier in the meeting on number five with the revised budget resolution. With that, could I have a motion for all items C1, number one to C6, number 15?
Move it.
You said C1, number what? C1...
C1, number one.
To, to where?
C6, 15.
I, I've got one question on, on one of the agenda items. C39A, that's the Mom with Ocean Educational Services. It's resolved that we approve the agreement to provide nursing services throughout the school year. Well, I guess the one question is, don't we already have nurses? Or is this hiring those nurses?
This is also for substitute nursing services?
Right. Okay, because it says nursing services slash substitute nursing services. So that's, that's why...
And field trip nurses.
Right. So that, but...
This covers a variety of things, field trips, substitutes of a nurse's absence, as well as...
On an as-needed basis.
As-needed, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Ricks?
I have a question on C38A. Should I abstain from that?
My suggestion to any board members who are listed in trainings would be that the board members abstain as it relates to themselves only. So for example, Ms. Ricks, if, if this is to approve your attendance at a workshop or conference, my suggestion would be that you vote yes then to all with the exception of that which mentions you or applies to you.
Thank you. This is all items C1, number one to C6, 15. Mr. Grillo?
Yes, I'm abstaining on C4, number 11.
And also, Mr. Grillo, any other item that refers to you, such as C4, uh, C3...
Yes, anything, yes, and everything that, anything that refers to me or Sustainable Journey.
Ms. Cook? Ms. Halls? Mr. LaRocca? Mr. Remy?
Yes on everything except C2, number five.
Are you abstaining or no?
You said...
Abstaining or no?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks?
Yes, except I abstain on C4, I don't 11, and C3, uh, I don't 8, and 10.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Madam President, I have a...
All items carry, thank you.
I have a request from the board for a May 19 meeting. I'm asking if the board would allow me to attend virtually if I'm able to. I'm having surgery on the 18th. If somebody can make a motion and allow me to.
Second.
So, Ms. Lozinski can participate virtually on the May 19 meeting. Mr. LaRocca? Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Halls?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
And Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do have one question if I can ask. We, we had spoken about looking at the, or reaching out to the DCA about the shared service incentive program that we have. I just wanted to see if there was any progress on that or if we're still good with intending to look into that. or if we're still good with intending to look into that at least.
Yes, as we discussed in finance, I think, last month.
Yeah.
That's something that we will look into. We're getting over this hurdle and then we'll start on that.
Awesome.
Can I make a general comment? Appreciate everyone's patience if we're about to, to wrap it up. Just wanted to point out from, from where I'm, I'm sitting, I appreciate many of the comments and I, I take notes. I, I don't intend that I know everything. Did not know about the parental involvement policy and something to follow up on. Someone made a suggestion about exit interviews with parents that I noted, which I thought was, was a good idea, or assessments to, to follow through with the HR director, that we are doing assessments for everyone. I appreciate those kinds of comments. But I can't let this meeting go wi- without a, a general comment as well. I heard name-calling. I heard impugning of individuals' character based on how they looked. I heard allegations that administrative error was intentional and I heard no facts to support such unsubstantiated allegation. Please know that if you'd like to come and do all those things, I, I guess you have a right to, but you're not going to be convincing me of anything. If you'd like to convince me personally, I appreciate a rational, factual statement and response to what it is that you're here to discuss. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, real quick, I wanted to express my pleasure and amazement at the Earth Day exposition at Thurgood Marshall School. I attended it the other, other day and the, the kids came up with some great projects. They were very eloquent in explaining all their little things they had done. It was wonderful. The school is clean. The walls are brightly decorated with things all over, student work, billboards, very, very bright and just a nice atmosphere. And I just wanted to say something publicly about it because it's been a little while since I've been in Thurgood Marshall. And anybody gets a chance to go through the school, it's quite a sight to see. And I appreciate the teachers and the administration that went into creating the environment over there. Not to say that any other school isn't the same, I just haven't been to the, there's those schools lately. But I just wanted to make a comment about the science, or the, the Earth Day Fair over there was excellent.
I'm glad you brought that up because we went to the solar reveal for the solar panels, right? That I mentioned before. And one, it's great to have all, all the, the board members that, that showed up. It was President Cook and Ms. Ricks, Mr. Latarocca, myself. Mr. Remmy was there. And one thing that was really cool was you see all these, these solar panels and you think about kind of the future and how we are being, you know, sustainably minded and thinking about our future generation. But the other part that sometimes people forget is we had a chance to look at the solar panels, look out the window of, of the high school. And admittedly, like, I want to spend more time in that high school because the, it's just a beautiful, beautiful campus, like historically, right? And it's just, it is, it's phenomenal to see that our kids have that, just that, that incredible treasure of, of that high school. Whenever I hear somebody mention, oh, you know, sometimes when you're knocking on doors, you hear people say, "Oh, you should sell the high school and build more condos," or something like that. I, man, it just drives me up a wall. Mr. Remmy said that, mentioned that the other day. Just once in a while, take a moment to take a stroll around the campus, you know, even from the outside and take a look at how beautiful that, that high school is. It's really something. It's a, it's a treasure for the whole city, so.
Motion to close?
Second.